I'll meet in the order and ask Councilor Sherri Barton to lead us into the legislative meeting.
State of the Union, two divided, under God, state of America, and two devoted, but which is hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Booth. Councilman Cotton. Councilman Kerry Barton.
Here.
Councilman Watson.
Here.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Here.
Mayor Lovelace.
Here.
We have a courtroom for business.
Approval of the minutes from the last meeting. I make a motion we approve the last meeting minutes that anybody clear.
Second.
Who was that second?
Councilman Watson's second.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Kerry Barton, second by Councilman Watson. Or, well, I never did even ask out there any time. To approve the minutes of the last meeting, are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none. Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
The motion passes and the minutes are approved.
I'd like to welcome our visitors here and saw we were a little bit late starting the meeting today. We'll try to do better. I have a proclamation to present today. I'm gonna read the proclamation and then I'm gonna present it, but today, one of our city employees, Eddie Cantu, reaches the Quarter Century Club of working with us and I'm gonna read this proclamation to him. Proclamation. Award of Membership in Bruton's Quarter of a Century Club. Whereas it is desire of the City of Bruton to recognize full-time employees of the City of Bruton who have served for a period of 25 years by creating a select group Bruton's Quarter of a Century Club and whereas the City of Bruton desires to give recognition to such longtime active city employees for their years of service and devotion to the city and to recognize them especially by creating of this unique club and whereas, once you have become a member of Bruton's Quarter of a Century Club, you're a member for life since it is felt that such long-term service deserves acknowledgement by an appropriate proclamation. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the City of Bruton that the following named person as of September the 20th, 2016, is recognized by being assigned a membership number based upon his period of service to the City of Bruton and that a copy of this proclamation be given at an appropriate ceremony by the mayor to said name individual showing the membership number and the years of service. Membership number 030, Eddie Cantu, city employee for 25 years. As mayor of the City of Bruton, I, the undersigned Yank Lovelace, do hereby present to you this proclamation in recognition and appreciation for your years of service and dedication to the City of Bruton, Alabama. I welcome you as an official member of the Bruton's Quarter of a Century Club and do hereby confer upon you all the privileges, responsibilities, and benefits of such club. I appreciate your past service to the city and look forward to future cooperation and service and development by your efforts for a better Bruton. Proclaimed this 26th day of September, 2016, Yank Lovelace, Mayor.
Congratulations, Eddie. Come on forward.
agenda. Under O Business, we will hold over to the next council the appointment of the Recreation Board. We'll hold over to the next meeting, approval of the purchase of the Downing property. We will add, I guess as item I, approval on the Dogwood Hills Rainbow Dragon playground equipment purchase. Put down me to present that. Now are there any other changes or additions?
We have. Well, you got the copy up here. Is there any other additions, any deletions or additions? If not, or there are none, I was all in favor of approving the agenda as presented. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay. Ayes have it. The agenda is approved.
The first item under new business is appointment. We have two members that were coming off of the Tree and Beautification Board and it's mayoral appointment. And I'll appoint Angela Watson and Anne Marie Sasser to that board. Next item, next two items are city clerk items.
As you see here on the wall is a copy of the fiscal year 2017 holidays as proposed. They're the same as last year, 10 total holidays.
You gotta look for a motion. I'll put motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Fred Barton, second by Councilman Watson to approve the 2017 holiday schedule. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. The holiday schedule is approved. The next item is the, just an announcement really or informational. The TR Miller High School Homecoming Parade is set for Friday, October the 7th. And as usual, the assembly of the floats and all is at TR Miller High School at 1:30. The parade starts at 2 o'clock. It's the usual route down Evergreen Avenue to Highway 31, over to Belleville and back up to the courthouse.
Need a motion?
No, not to the announcement. The next two items are lease agreements with Jefferson Davis Community College. These two documents we've been working on for some time now and I'll ask the city attorney, Ed Hines, to present them.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. As Mayor said, this has kind of been a work in progress for some time, but it's really gonna be a, I think, a benefit for the city and also for the college. It really enhance our park system and the development of the park system around Burncorn Creek. Basically, the four corners of the deal are that the city will lease a property that's currently owned by Jefferson Davis Junior College. One piece of property is the, what is now known as the JDJC Park where the golf course is and the baseball fields in that area. Another is all the way to the creek, a kind of a stair step to the creek, the joint's property already owned by the city, some other parcels that are owned by the Junior College. The city's consideration and the benefit that's flowing to the college is that the city will maintain or basically cut the grass, so to speak, of the areas included. Now, the areas, the requirement to maintain the property does not include the fine grooming and upkeep of the baseball fields, all the softball fields. They will continue to do that, nor will we have any responsibility with respect to resurfacing the tennis courts, repairing the bleachers, the storage houses out there, any of the utility houses. So, basically, it will allow, be a part of the park system as it is currently being developed. And there are two leases, two separate leases. One has to do with the area by the creek and the other has to do with the main park at the golf course.
Need a motion?
Yes.
I'll put motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Fred Barton, second by Councilman Kerry Barton to approve the Jeff Davis Park lease agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. The college park lease agreement is approved. We need to do the other one separately, the next one, which is the walking paths agreement.
I'll put motion to approve the walking path agreement.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Watson, second by Councilman Fred Barton to approve the college walking path lease agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. The walking path agreement is approved.
Next item, I'll call on Law.
Thank you, Mayor. For the last couple of years, I've been working on this piece of property, getting this eyesore either demoed or repaired or, so, give you sort of a timeline, June of 23rd of 15, I contacted Mr. Sylvester McCorvey about it by certified mail and basically saying you need to repair the property or tear it down. And of course, the last couple of years, it's really gotten to be in really, really bad shape. The, and first of this year, the, well, actually in June, a title opinion was done by Mr. Hines. It's firm and completed, they completed it and so we served the, Mr. McCorvey and the Nancy Ken of the Travis family as recommended by Mr. Hines. In July of this year, a letter was delivered to the heir of the property, the only heir that we could find, Mr. Travis, and talked with Mr. Travis and he said none of the other heirs, he couldn't even get up with them, so, so, he didn't know how to, if it was an emergency of some kind, he wouldn't be able to get up with them. So, it's my recommendation that the city demo this house all the time, as far as 45 days and so forth, is really, is passed. And so it's my recommendation that the city demo this property. We do have a couple of proposals to demo the property. As you can see, Pitt's Dozier is the low bid on the demo of the property. Cleaning of all the slab, every, all the construction material, everything will be gone and he'll actually bring in some dirt fill and smooth it out.
Make a motion we approve resolution number 16-0926.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kerry Barton, second by Councilman Watson to approve the demolition resolution number 160926. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes and the demolition resolution is approved.
Question. Where? I'm gonna call him in the morning. Thanks. Thank you, Law. Really appreciate that. We still got some work we're working on.
As Law knows, there's a lot of houses and buildings that the city is working toward demo and there's a big desire on the council's part to move this process forward as quickly as possible, so, that was the reason for the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the purchase of a trash truck. Do you want a city clerk to handle? Or do you want Craig?
Craig, could you come to the microphone in case we have a question? Okay, we have a, need a new trash truck and our, we've had, you know, got a problem with the one currently and if you have, I didn't know, if you have any questions of Mr. Durbin's...
Craig, the question that was coming up in the council was, you know, we, well, first, tell us what's wrong.
That model truck, they've had issues with getting parts for. Just ain't our truck, there's several trucks in that model. Got a call this morning, the turbo they got it ordered, they can't hardly find one in the United States. They don't give a, they haven't gave me a timeline when we're gonna get it back. They hoping for the end of the week. I started looking at some more trash trucks. We wasn't able to purchase one a year after that we bought the new one. You don't know what you, when you buy these vehicles and they put bids on whatever truck the bid's on, you don't know what you're really getting or who put it together if it's gonna even work, but situation is bad anyway. Got some prices, went and looked at two different trucks. This truck here's been completely refurbished for the price. Sampson Equipment, Dino Mobile, they're tech people, I let them look at just about anything I wanna buy or, and I get advice, you know, they give me advice on if it's worth it or not. This truck, like I said, it's, he'll give me a warranty on it, so it's a no-brainer when we need a backup anyway.
Craig, let's go back a month before this. A lot of people been calling, didn't know they had a truck that broke down. Let's bring everybody to sit on camera now, explain to everybody what's going on. You know, the truck is broken down, we don't have a backup truck. We're using a dump truck in the back to pick up trash, we're behind schedule. A lot of people still don't know that we have a problem.
Well, we, last week, we posted on Bruton Reborn.
Everybody don't have internet.
And matter of fact, as of today, we have called up except for what extra people, I mean, people put it right back out there as soon as we pick it up.
Yeah, okay.
They using an excuse, you know, sometimes, you know, hey, you got a truck, you ain't been by here. Yes, some of it, we can't pick up for power lines with a backup.
Right, okay.
You know, we can't get a dump truck down, some of it, you know.
Yeah.
We're doing the best we can, what we got.
Yeah, that's why I'm...
Like I said, I wouldn't have ever guessed this truck would give us this kind of trouble this quick.
One more question. And I, we talk about this in the thing. Save Friday, you have an example. Mr. Ed, this Friday's coming Friday and we still got a problem with this new truck. How much longer do we go for, say, okay, look, we're gonna void this contract, give us another truck, give us back our money. How long will we have to wait? If this don't work out with the new truck we got, you know what I'm saying? I hate to put you on the spot. And then the legal recourse we have to say, look, we want our money back, they've been gone a long enough.
It depends on what the warranty is.
The warranty is covering everything.
I think that question was, when we were checking, was limited law.
Right.
And did it apply and if so, what was the time?
See, I'll have to go to Sampson Equipment and talk to Jeff and he'll have to give me some answers on that.
Yeah. I'm not saying I purchased this truck, I'm saying is, how long we gonna drag along with this truck?
Right.
With the old truck.
Right, well, I'm hoping this is my last week because...
Yeah, nah, just go ahead and get back our money, buy another truck with that money also.
Right.
We have a backup.
Yes.
For the next time. See if I was getting that.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. I've been working with them on the phone trying to figure it out.
Okay.
Craig, just a quick question for you. You made mention that this bid on the back of this truck is a conversion kit, is that correct?
Yes, what it is, when you buy a garbage truck or a trash truck, you buying the body.
Right.
Whatever truck is on the bid, it might be a Sterling, it might be a Ford, it could be anything and that's what you get. Other words, you don't just go out and pick the truck you want, it's what's on that bid list for, you know, the way we have to do it.
And so, having said that, then that bid is also covered by the manufacturer's suggested retail warranty, is that correct?
On a, yes, on a different type of warranty, yes. That's covered on the company that makes the bid.
Okay.
All right, and the total cost is $74,900?
Yes, sir.
Then we're gonna lease to buy, you said, right? We're gonna lease to buy, lease...
Right.
Lease to all, sorry, yeah, lease to all, yeah. You got the resolution for it or...
We would, we won't be looking for...
Just a motion.
It's a motion to purchase, but there's going to be a bid, there're gonna be bids for the financing.
Okay, okay. Make that motion.
The second. Motion.
Kerry made the motion.
Motion by Councilman Kerry Barton, second by Councilman Watson to approve the purchase of a trash truck. Any further discussion?
Well, $74,900.
Well, yes, now the...
This trash truck?
$74,900, but now this, there may be some additional costs.
I understand.
Okay. Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. The purchase of the trash truck is approved.
Next item is the replacement of the playground at the city-owned golf course. And the playground has been referred to as Rainbow Dragon, I guess that was the manufacturer of it or the name out of the model when we bought it. That playground equipment is approaching probably 20 years old and the plastic is been gone and we've been trying for a long, long time to come up with funding to replace the whole thing. There's no parts of it that are reusable. This time of year is the time when these playground manufacturers give discounts. The playground, and I don't, I guess we do have, equipment, that would be black and white, colors one if anyone here wants to look at it. The price on that is $157,805 plus $5,355 in freight. But this time of year, they offer discounts. So the discount that they're offering is $46,950.45. So at this time, it seems to be the opportune time to replace the present playground equipment with the new playground equipment manufactured by JA Dawson, Gang Time Equipment, for a total of $116,269.55.
And this would be the same type of motion, just to purchase?
Yeah, a motion to purchase.
I make that motion.
Second. I second.
Motion by Councilman Watson, second by Councilman Kerry Barton to approve the purchase of Rainbow Dragon's new equipment. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes and the purchase of the equipment is approved.
This item such as this is what we, we have a list called Special Projects and that's one of those special projects that's on that list. One that was added to the list today, just sort of an announcement purposes, was a drainage project at the intersection of, this was the intersection of Lyles and Lewis and Hollinger Streets, it's in that area and it's about an $8,000 drainage project and I think our costs come from RMCC Construction. But the council, when that is presented to the council, that is something the council wanted to move forward on, but it's just sort of an announcement today to let the people in that area know that that is going to happen. The paving project on Sowell Road South, which is a major paving project and it is the last of what we call ATRIP grant money, and it's the largest of all of the projects. We ask that the engineers come and hold a public meeting so that the people that are in that area could see the scope and size and timelines on that project, just because it is such a major project. That is gonna be held at...
Baptist Hill Baptist Church.
On the 3rd?
On the 30th, 6:30.
October the 3rd at Baptist Hill Baptist Church at...
6:30.
6:30. And I urge you to pass that to your friends and neighbors that are in that area because I said it's gonna take a, it's such a large project, it's gonna disrupt that neighborhood for a good long while as we build that because there's some major drainage areas under that road and up and down and different places. There's a railroad track and big ditch and there's new sidewalks, there's just a lot that's gonna be going on in that project. And so we urge everybody that can to make that, that meet.
Time, mayor?
6:30.
6:30.
Are there any other announcements?
Mayor, I'd like to make one. Since due to the fact we're gonna meet that Monday, I'm not gonna have a community meeting this month, 'cause we'll take care of it that Monday. Normally I meet at the end of the month, we're not gonna meet District 4, we're not gonna meet. But we'll be Monday at 6:30 at Baptist Hill Baptist Church next Monday. Thank you, Mayor.
So Councilman Watson can interject things like that 'cause today's his birthday.
Yeah, really. I deserve it. I appreciate you very much.
Any other now? We do have some comments. I'd like to call on Stephen Smith. Smith, step up to the microphone and give us your name, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmen. I'm Stephen Smith and I'm here this afternoon representing the TR Miller Band Boosters. As you are aware, each fall, the TR Miller Band hosts a marching band festival, usually in October. This year, it's going to be on Saturday, October the 22nd, and I am seeking permission this afternoon to close a portion of Tiger Drive that day to ensure the safety of the band members and the bus drivers that will be here that day. I've already talked to Chief McGugan and I have his authorization to do so. We want to close the portion that would cover from the tennis courts to Belleville Avenue. That will still leave the two main entrances to that parking lot open to the public, the one that's right immediately in front of Farmer's Furniture and the one at Subway. Those entrances will not be affected and the Band Boosters will provide people to help oversee the smooth flow of traffic so that we won't have to worry the police department with that.
And you've already gotten this approved by the police department?
Yes, I've already talked to Chief McGugan about that.
What time it gonna start on the 20th?
It will start, we will close at approximately 9 o'clock that morning and it will be closed till approximately 9 that evening. We'll get it back open just as quickly as we can.
There's the same portion of roads that you chanked that you have closed for all the other...
Yes, sir.
Activities at the...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I make motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fred Barton, a second by Councilman Watson to approve the closing of Tiger Drive. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Kerry Barton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, the closing of Tiger Drive is approved.
Thank you, Council.
Do we have a representative for the junior rodeo? If you don't want a cowboy hat with or not.
If I had a little warning.
Please give your name.
I'm Rachel Fillmore. I'm here on behalf of the Alabama Junior Rodeo Association, and we would like to have the council's permission to use O'Bannon Park the morning of October 15th and 16th, that's a Saturday morning and a Sunday morning. The Chamber of Commerce is having a rodeo there Friday night and Saturday night, and so we're, would, we want to use the arena Saturday morning and Sunday morning to have our rodeo there. We do have our own liability insurance, and we would list the City of Bruton as an additional insured on that.
And the Chamber of Commerce is good with this?
Yes, we've spoken with them and have their approval to do so.
And this is going to the public, I'm assuming, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
We have local contestants, it's children ages kindergarten through eighth grade.
And what time will they start, every morning?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock?
Mm-hmm. Each morning.
Okay. Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Councilman Kerry Barton, second by Councilman Fred Barton to approve the junior rodeo usage of O'Bannon Park. Have any further discussion?
The cleanup, to leave the park in the same condition that you found it in for the next upcoming rodeo, you guys take care of that?
Yes, we'll clean up after ourselves.
Any further discussion? Councilman Kerry Barton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, and the junior rodeo is approved.
Thank you.
I got one other thing. Not, not for you, I'm sorry. It's, I think everybody knows that the City of Bruton gives one cent out of the four cent sales tax that we collect to the, to the Bruton City School System. But a year or so ago, and I don't remember the exact timeframe now, they were redoing the football field and the baseball field, and came to this city and asked if we could do more. This council approved, I believe it was an extra $20,000 or so, to help them finish that project, in addition to the normal one piece of tax. They finished the baseball field, or basically all, but finished it just the other day, and it was a project where it was modular in nature, and they bring it in with cranes and set it up, and it was like, new baseball field, new bleachers, new press box overnight, if you will. And if you hadn't had the opportunity to go see it, I think it's something the City of Bruton would be very proud of. It really looks nice, and I want to commend the school for on having that done, that it really does look very nice.
Have any other announcements or comments?
Make a motion.